I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to open the April 24th, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting.
Seconded, Mark Cullen.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Josh Antrim aye.
Mark Cullen an aye.
Richie Wongba aye. Okay. We're here. We're ready.
Am I supposed to say something here?
Well Richie has some opening comments.
Opening comments where we? I'm trying to look for my paperwork here.
Yeah, me too.
I can, I can start to read them if you'd like.
Uh, hang on, where is it? Where the hell is it? No, I read it. I had it up here. Oh, here. No, sure it's at the wall. Uh. Oh, here it is, yeah. Oh, okay, here we go. Meeting 2:00 P.M. Uh, the annual town, is this, the annual town election has been postponed until Saturday, June 20th, 2020. Uh, the town election, I meant, has been postponed until Saturday, June 20th, 2020. The annual town meeting has been postponed until Saturday, June 27th, 2020. And the MEEPA, and the, um, the MEEPA comment deadline extension regarding Northeastern Universities on the agenda. Uh, the new business, we gotta extend, uh, make a motion, uh, extend the WAF boat storage end date from May 15th to May 21st. Want to do that now?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, and if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I can give some explanation to it.
No, we don't need an explanation, just.
Can we, uh, can we pause for just one second? Seeing the chat that, um, there's some people trying to get in that can't get in.
Yeah, I just asked, uh, I asked Michelle if, um, I mean, it's on the website, it shouldn't be. Let's see.
So, this is, uh, this is under the public?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, by the time, it's, it's only, we only have a couple of things on here, by the time I get it opened, it's probably gonna be, we're gonna be moving into executive session, but I'll put it on the Town Hall Facebook page right now.
Do you want to run?
Who was that?
It sounded like Debbie.
Who's that Debbie?
That was me, sorry.
You gonna do it?
Who's you?
I think the FedEx person was at the wrong house.
Oh.
You hear that story about Tom Brady walking into the wrong house the other day?
Oh, God, that's funny. How are you, Deb?
I'm okay, okay.
Oh, good. Nice talking to you.
Yeah, nice, nice talking to you Richie.
Oh, goodness. Okay, where are we, uh, where's the?
Hold on one second, Mr. Chairman, just making sure people, um, have, you know, if they want to join.
Okay.
Um, just give me thirty more seconds here.
Um, yeah.
Okay, um.
All right, you ready, Tony?
I am ready.
Now we can discuss.
Oh, yeah, why don't you go ahead and make that motion, uh, on the, um.
Then Tony can discuss it, uh. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the town administrator's proposal to extend the WAF boat storage end date from May 15th, 2020, to May 21st, 2020.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is that Josh?
Yep, seconded.
Okay, motion, motion is made and seconded. Discussion, Tony?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received, uh, many requests, or many, um, lines of communication about boat, boat storage at the Wharf from folks who store their boat on the Wharf, from boats who do not, uh, boat owners who do not, and, uh, from just the general public who, um, enjoy the property. You know, it's, uh, it's, it's challenging, I guess I would say that for us, uh, we are doing, we're trying to put orders in place or guidance in place that protect the health and well-being of all residents, but also trying to balance, um, you know, keeping things moving, uh, as best as we possibly can. And with the Wharf, you know, obviously we want to protect people's, um, health and we don't want to make people, uh, come out of their homes, you know, more than they have to. Uh, but we also want to get the parking lot clear because, um, you know, we may still do some form of a Memorial Day parade. Um, we, there are, you know, many boaters in town that, um, launch their boat from a trailer and need place to park. And then there's, um, you know, the, uh, just general ability to, to access the property. Um, we still, you know, right now, we are, we have, all our parking lots are closed. Um, so we'll have to, over the next couple of weeks, we'll have to think about how we're gonna, um, manage the Wharf parking lot, uh, going forward. Um, but I can understand, you know, with the coronavirus that the typical schedule that people might follow to work on their boats and get them prepared to be launched is, is affected by the coronavirus and just like our, you know, everybody's everyday life is, so, we felt it was, um, important to provide a little extra, uh, time and a schedule and guidance to the boat owners that store their boats on the property, to get their boats prepared. And we're proposing to extend it to the 21st after working with, um, Jocelyn Marine Services, who do the, who does like the group launching. Uh, they offered that day to us, so we took advantage of it. We also put out guidance that, uh, folks who are working on their boats, that they work on, you know, one side of their boat on even days and the other side of the boat on odd days, so that they can try to stay away from each other and also require that anybody working, anybody down in that area, uh, have a face mask of some sort. So it seems to be, uh, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from, uh, folks down there and they're appreciative of it. Um, and if we get, uh, Jocelyn believes they'll be able to launch everybody by the 21st, so, Memorial Day is the twenty Yep. Memorial Day is the fall, so that's, 21st is a Thursday and Memorial Day is a following Monday. So we, uh, talked to, uh, DPW, they believe they should be able to get the place cleaned up and, um, that's, that's all of it. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Hey, Tony?
Yes.
I'd put a sign up down there. Uh, the, the Wharf is, um, closed only to boat owners.
Okay.
But I tell you, I, I, I notice when I take my drive around town, people are driving down there. Uh, with Lynn Beach being closed, they've got no place to go, so they, they're, they're driving down these, you know, roads, Willa Road and I'm just thinking, we should only allow the boat owners or whatever they need, their crew or, uh, down there only, so we don't have, you know, because, um, as we get closer to May, it's gonna be good weather and I'm not sure when they're gonna open all these beaches up or anything like that, so. We're getting a lot of traffic down there.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I can work on that.
It might be advisable, uh, put a, uh, one of our police officers at the end, in the opening, just, you know, for only let the boat owners and their crew or whoever's helping to, you know, paint the boat, clean it up and down there, so you don't have a, you know, because you notice all the beaches are all closed, you know?
Yeah, and you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get the ramp wa, uh, pressure washed next week, we're gonna try and get the float in, um, but you know, it's, it, we, we, of course, we don't want to be encouraging people to be, um, hanging around on the beach or, or things like that, so. Yeah, I can, I can work on maybe getting another, um, electronic message board to put down there.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll work on it, it's a good idea, we'll find, we'll figure something out.
You know, it, it, you know, the people that, you know, that wanna be down there to get their boats ready and prepared should be the only ones down there. We don't, there's just a bunch of traffic, people are driving, they're just, you know, and there's.
Yeah, you know, it's tough because, you know, same thing I noticed down the golf course.
Yep.
You know, we got a sign and we got cones. Uh, we don't want to put Jersey berries up in case there's an emergency on, we want, uh, emergency vehicles to be able to get in in a hurry. But, you know, people just move their cones, drive right by the sign. Um, so we just try to manage it, try and send folks down, uh, the police are doing a good job managing it, going down there and, um, and getting, uh, folks out of the area, so.
Does Ocean View need that opened up?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, are you gonna open up the golf course? That's why it brought me in, are you gonna open up the golf course?
Uh, no, so, the closure of golf courses is still in place, um, I think until May 4th as of right now.
Okay.
I, I, I'm hearing rumblings that, uh, the governor may extend that May 4th deadline uh, or end date to his stay-at-home advisory with businesses and, uh, shutdowns and things like that. Uh, so, we are taking a close look at it. Um, if the governor, uh, does not do that, we have, I believe we have the authority, Dan, jump in here. I believe we have the authority to, to do it locally beyond that, um, if we feel it's necessary. Um, personally, I feel like, um, it would be a shame to have to restart this whole coronavirus process. You know, we've done such a good job as a state and as a community, keeping the numbers low and, and, and having things in place that limit the transmission of it, so I would hate to have to restart. Many, from the beginning, you know, we talked about a secondary spike. Um, a lot of other countries or areas of the world experienced that because they kind of got relaxed too quick. But there may be something, you know, golf, if, if I'm, on the calls that I've been on with the, with other municipal leaders, um, they talk about a phased approach, um, getting back to, to normal life and, uh, you know, golf is something that could be on, in one of the earlier phases, if it's managed appropriately, so, um, it's something that we're looking at, something that we're considering. It also depends on what the governor does.
Just keep in mind, you, you should watch Gannon if Gannon opens up, because if, if you open up Kelly Green's and it's, you're the only car, you know, open, the place is gonna be jammed with golfers down there, you know.
Right, I was thinking the same thing, yeah.
Just, it won't be just for an hour because it's a public course, but I, I'm thinking we should be very careful about opening that up until like Gannon opens up or something like that, so that, you know, the other golf, I know Tresco's closed, so, but I mean, I just, I just be careful because if, if you open it up, it's just gonna, the people are gonna be inundated down there. I mean, just, they're all gonna come down, I mean.
I agree, I agree.
Yep.
I'd rather be, I'd rather be late to that party and be wrong, you know?
Yep.
All right, uh, so you have a motion that's been seconded.
Uh, any other further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor sing a by saying aye, give us like a roll call vote, name and vote. I'll go with Josh first.
You move it, Josh.
Josh Antrim aye.
Mark Cullen an aye.
Richie Wongba aye. Uh, the passage unanimous, okay. Um.
Uh, Tony, uh, before we take this next, um, vote to go into executive session, is there, is there any open comment area for anybody?
We didn't have it posted, but you certainly had the authority to open it up.
Well, I, I just see all the people on, I'm not sure if anybody has anything to say, so.
Can I make a quick comment?
Uh, no.
Right. I'll make a long one, no, um, it's, it's, there's not too many people listening, but, uh, the Lynn item had an, an article yesterday with a misleading headline that said the Attorney General rejects the zoning bylaw change, so, uh, that's not an accurate statement, they, they approved it with changes, so, um, in, in people's conversations with people, maybe they can set it straight and, um, that'll be posted pretty soon, Tony, that, that letter?
Yeah, well, we, um, so the next step in the process, it, you know, with, with working kind of part-time and outside of the building and, uh, Carol being interim clerk and never having to deal with this, it's, it's, we're slow to getting it posted. But, uh, basically, we gotta take what the Attorney General approved, integrate it into the zoning law and then get that posted on the website. Uh, is there any other steps involved in that, Dan?
Yeah, posting and publishing, those are the two big words, post and publish it.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just an unfortunate, uh, unfortunately misleading headline, I guess I would say.
Yeah, I understand that the item, and this happens quite often, that the, um, that the journalist or the, the person who's writing the article, it does, doesn't necessarily have control of what the headline is. So sometimes they, they don't match up very well, I think the editor decides on what the headline is and, the journalist is, uh, is secondary to that, so.
Also, I don't, I don't know if it was mentioned or not, but the MEPA comment deadline, uh, for the Northeastern Universities' final environmental impact report, uh, has been extended. The original deadline was, uh, today, April 24th, it's been extended to June 12th. And we'll put that on the website as well. Also, I, I asked Deb Murphy to join us in case, um, you had any coronavirus update questions. We have just quick numbers on this, we have, uh, twenty-eight, um, total cases since this started in the hot. Uh, we are now up to five deaths, unfortunately. And we have, uh, we've had, uh, seventeen total in the, in the Jesmond Nursing Home um, and four deaths from that building so far. Right now, we have fourteen, the terminology, I'll, I'll defer to Deb, but, uh, fourteen active, I guess, or uh, cases that haven't technically recovered quite yet, they're, they're in isolation. Um, but we're, but we're going on our third day without a new positive number.
Right. And, and just, you know, just to talk about that fourteen, Tony, so outside of a nursing home, if, um, if somebody's positive in the community, they're in isolation for a minimal of seven days and their contacts in their house or any contacts that they've had within forty-eight hours are, are on quarantine for two weeks. But when you talk about the, um, nursing home setting, you know, I was just looking at the notes, the National Guard came in there the weekend of, uh, April 10th. April 10th and 12th, they tested that whole facility. So, you know, that's, uh, we've certainly hit the weak, however, because some of the people that tested negative at that time have, um, since, um, developed symptoms and then went to the hospital and tested positive, we keep pushing, you know, those dates out further and further for that, for the Jesmonds, so, um, when we say they're active, I would consider that we're gonna be talking that we have an active, positive community in that building for longer than, uh, you know, we would if it was one of our homes outside and we were just trying to maintain our own small household, but because there's so many people there in that congregate setting, um, and we still have the, uh, we still could have people, like I said, that are negative who test positive today, then we have to start from today's date. So I think, I think we're, we're still, uh, ways out from, uh, lifting any, uh, you know, any positives out of the Jesmonds. But, but on the community side of things, um, we do have travelers, like we mentioned last time, coming home, that I've reached out to some, um, some of them, sent them the quarantine information. Um, so we have that small population, but our, um, uh, positive cases in the community, this has been the first week since we've started tracing this, that, um, things, things have started to, I don't want to get too optimistic here, but, um, and we'll let the weekend see what happens, but it, it looks like we're seeing lower numbers now, so keep your fingers crossed.
All right, good Debbie, yeah, that's a good sign.
But Richie, to your point, I'd be afraid of, um, you know, like you said about the golf course, I would be afraid, if, exactly, if, if we open and Gannon doesn't open.
Yeah.
You know, that'd just give us something in the community where there's more of a, uh, it, it, it makes me a little unsettled to think that, uh, we, we don't want to, um, I don't want to, uh, I mean Lynn's rate, you saw Lynn's rate, they're terribly high, so I wouldn't want us to, uh, change our position, really.
No, no, we, we shouldn't without, you know, uh, because if Kelly Green is the only play in town, then they'll be, the place will be jammed, you know, Gannon, without Gannon opening up and the surrounding golf courses, I wouldn't, I'd keep it closed until that point. I mean, I just, I just think you, uh, you know, because a lot of guys from Lynn play over there, so I mean, the place will be jammed.
Right, right. I mean, nobody wants to golf more than I do, believe me.
Oh, no, no, I mean, the, 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 the guy's asking me to open up the golf course, but they don't really, you know, it's not, if, if we're the only golf course open, believe me, it's gonna be jammed, so.
It will be, yeah. And then just, you know, the opportunity for more face-to-face interactions and, you know, everyone knows that.
So, I, my, my advice, and, well, Tony and the Golf Committee can make that decision, but, you know.
Like I said, I, I am, I'm on the side of, we, you know, we, now, it's, it's more important now than ever for us to maintain our, um, uh, separation and, and be disciplined on that. And I know it's tough as the weather gets warmer and people have been inside for longer and, um, but, you know, the last thing we want to do is restart this whole process again. Um, so, you know, I, uh, it does sound like, um, uh, we have a couple of businesses that legally are allowed to be open, essential businesses that are legally allowed to be open, that are looking to, uh, open their doors back up, like Dunkin' Donuts and Richland. Um, of course, they'll still have to follow the, the guidelines that we've put forward, that the governor's put forward about, you know, less than ten people in the building, um, uh, six-foot distancing, all the, all the workers have to be, um, wearing masks, um, you know, we, Lynn and Swanscott, uh, have ordered anyone entering their essential businesses to wear a mask, customers. You know, we, we, just, just so you know, the reason we didn't make that order is because we don't have any businesses that, um, that, essential businesses that could, that are legally allowed to be open, that would bring in, you know, that many people. Um, that would, you know, Lynn and Swanscott, they have grocery stores and liquor stores that can, that can, you know, have more than ten people in the building, we don't really have that. So we've really just been encouraging and urging residents that whenever they're outside to be wearing a mask and especially when they go in the essential businesses. So, you know, that's an option for us to take that up if, if this, if you guys want to have a discussion about that and, and we can consider it maybe for the next meeting, but, um, you know, I, I've felt that from the businesses that are open that I spoke with, they've said that pretty much everybody is wearing a mask when they come in there, as it is. And that they're really not having more than maybe two or three people in the building at a time. Uh, so, I think, I think we're in pretty good shape the way that it is, but I just wanted to kind of explain, um, while we're open to the public here, why we, you know, have done what we've done.
Tony?
Yeah.
This is Richie. I think we, you should, uh, with the, you know, tell, with, with the Board's approval, uh, and ask Mark and Josh, I think we should have mandatory, uh, mask wearing in the town and the hall. I just think, you know, I was out for a, a walk the other day and I, all these young people, they, they have no mask on and, uh, you know, that's, they're, they're, they're in five, eight kids, you know, that group. I just think, uh, you know, people are walking and half got a mask on, which, you know, and the other half don't. I just think it should be mandatory, you go outside, you should be wearing a mask. That's my recommendation.
I, uh, I'll ask Dan to jump in, I don't know if, like, I don't think that's, other communities haven't ordered that, um, but they have the ability to order it within a business or a building or a town property. Dan, do you, is that?
That would be, the Board of, the Board of Health would have to get involved, uh, and make some sort of finding that that is a required event to curtail what I guess is a rampant virus. It might be a bit of a severe, like as Tony mentioned, I haven't heard of any other cities or towns have done that. Um, but like you said, Lynn and Swanscott have demanded essential service businesses require masks. Yes, we could do it, but it would be, it would, that would be an extreme measure, I think. But the Board of Health would make a finding that it's required to maintain the public health, you can go from there. Uh, the big problem you're gonna have, Richie, is enforcement. I mean, who's gonna stop these, is, you know, is Chief Dwyer gonna stop these folks and say, hey, put on a mask to go home?
I'm not looking for an enforcement, but I think if, uh, we come out with the Board of Selectmen, you know, it's, uh,
Oh, yeah, you know, you can make a recommendation, yeah, absolutely, there's nothing wrong with recommending, uh, asking, or whatever the term may be. Sure, you can do that, no problem at all.
The Board of Selectmen's also the Board of Health, too, and we wear those two hats. So I just, just a suggestion, and people are walking and a lot of people walking and walking on the beaches and, uh, I just think some have masks and some don't, I just, you know, it might be just a recommendation that Tony puts out on, whatever it is, calls.
Well, just so you know, Richie, I, I have, uh, posted that in all of our, it's on, you know, in all my messages and in my code red calls, um, that I put up there. Um, I've been urging residents, um, you know, to stay home as much as they can, but if they go outside, that they wear a mask and especially, you know, I've emphasized, if they're going into, the few essential businesses that are open, that they be wearing a mask. I guess the only, the next step really is what Swanscott and Lynn did, where they can, you know, businesses like, um, Stop and Shop or Home Depot or Liquor Store or something can actually tell people they're not allowed in the building per the town's order, uh, without a mask. We haven't taken that step again because, you know, it's not like we have a building that can put a, you know, a hundred people, it's not like, we don't have those big businesses, so it's all related to, um, how, uh, you know, how many. you know, how many people are gonna be in a low, in a, in a, in a confined space, right? So, you know, again, I, I feel like we're doing a pretty good job. It sounds like when I talk to the business owners that they, you know, have been, most people are wearing a mask when they go in there and that there really are low numbers in there. But now that you have Dunkin' Donuts and Richland and, you know, businesses that are allowed to be open, considering coming back online and opening their doors, you know, we, we could consider a, an order that says anyone entering an essential business must wear a mask.
Absolutely, that's 100%, yeah.
I, I'm in, I, I'd be okay with that, I'd be more than happy to propose it.
Tony, I think that, I think that that's a good idea for people going into the businesses. I don't think necessarily it's, it needs to be something in place for people outside. And I know for a fact that they're not recommending any children under the age of like four or five even wear a mask. But the thing, the thing is, we're talking about, you know, when we identify any contact person, it's within six feet for a prolonged length of time. So prolonged length of time would mean anything, you know, fi, in the five minute range. So, you know, you could, that could imply to people that are going into, into any of these stores. And certainly, like I mentioned the other day, people are going into the bank by appointment only. I was surprised, I thought it was only drive through. But I think, I, I think, I don't think that's a big inconvenience to people, you know, going into one of these places to put a mask on. I don't think it's an inconvenience. You know, you're going in, you're getting a sandwich, or you're going in getting a cup of coffee, or whatever you're doing. It's, why is that, you know, it shouldn't be a problem for people. We do it, you're doing it if you're going to Swamp Scott or if you're going anywhere else, so I don't have to go to stores, so.
I'd be fine with requiring, requiring it for going into businesses.
So while I work with Dan.
With Lynn and Swamp Scott, right?
While I work with Dan, we'll put together an order and we'll put it on the agenda for next week. But even though I, I believe I have the authority to issue it under the local emergency and as the Board of Health's agent, but I can, uh, we can put it together. I'll send it out to you guys and we can make it, you know, do a formal vote on it on Thursday.
That's good.
Yeah, that's fine.
And if, Tony, if you feel like you have to do it sooner, I, you know, check with Dan and I'm, if you have the authority, just do it.
Yeah, you have the authority, really.
If you feel like you have to do it before next day, I have no problem with that.
I have no problem with it either.
Yeah, me neither. I mean, the good news is, most people are doing it anyway.
I will, uh, after we get off the, after this call, I'll work with Dan. On it and, yeah, get it, get it going.
Okay.
Okay, that's all, that's on the agenda. Do you wanna, do you wanna open it to, uh, public comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm prepared.
The Board of Selectmen, uh, let me ask the board, Mark and Josh, if they've got any opening comments or any, any, not opening comment, any comment or all before we open up to the public?
No.
No, I'll say bitch.
Okay, um, is there anything, anyone on the call, uh, from the public, would like to say anything?
Look, let me get through the chat real quick here.
You're getting through that?
Need something?
Looks like there's support, uh, well, I guess first, we have a comment from Bonnie D Orlando. That's, says, Tony, Dan, Josh, Mark, Richie, you are, you're all terrific. Great job, from Bonnie and John. Deb, you too. Coralong says, Coralong says, yes, uh, thank you Richie, at least in any business in town. I think that she's supporting the, um, supporting the idea of requiring people to wear masks going into businesses. Joe Mellon, I came in late, was Wharf Storage extended? Yes, Joe. Unanimously approved to extend to May 21st. And that's all I have in there.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, uh.
Hold on, one more.
Okay.
Can you clarify the voting requirements for upcoming elections? Are mail ballots being considered? Dan, you've been working pretty closely with Carol on this. I believe mail in, mail ballots are allowed.
Yes, Michelle, that's a great question. Um, yes, we always have the potential for absentee ballots, but now we have early voting mail in ballots. And if you have any concern whatsoever that you might get affected by the virus that's out there and you want to mail in your ballot, just, just call Carol or email her and ask her for an absentee ballot, or it's also called the early voting mailing ballot. Absolutely, you can do that. You never even have to enter town hall. She'll mail it to you, you can mail it back or put it in the deposit box in front of town hall. Uh, we're working with Linda Peterson to get that word out to all the seniors through the COA. And if you want to get the word out, that would be helpful as well. Last year, we had, I think, 1,300 voters out of 2,100. So if we come somewhere near that number this year, well, then that would be a success.
Any of those become available, Dan?
The, Carol is going to apply for the ballots on Monday. It's, I, I think it should take about a week to get them back and, but you don't have to wait till then. You can email Carol right now, so she'll put you on the list and she'll get those ballots to you through the mail.
That's great. They can reach out to Carol, um, starting now, they can make that request.
Absolutely, right now, I think, email her right now, she, they wanted to, absolutely.
And as soon as she has them, they can, she can send them out. Um, and yes, so Michelle also says, can you get the message out broadly? You have residents that do not have email or internet, can we leverage the lighted sign? Yeah, we'll, 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 um, I could also, you know, include it in my next provocall, too. We'll, we'll, we'll find a way to, to make sure everybody's aware of that. It's a good point, obviously, we want to try to encourage as many mail in ballots as possible, given the current circumstance, so. And, um, Joe also asked a clarifying, clarifying question about boat launch. Will Jocelyn be hauling out May 21st and 29th? No, Joe, it's just the 21st. Um, if for some reason, they're not able to get all the boats off that day, or we run into weather issues, we will work with Jocelyn to find another day after that. But the, the idea is to have them all off by the 21st. Okay.
Hey, Tony?
Yes.
Are we all done?
We're all done.
Okay, um, I'm gonna move the, um, we're gonna be moving out of the regular meeting and we're gonna be going into an executive session. And we're gonna be discussing the lease and the evaluation of real property, which is Kelly Greens Golf Course. And we will not reconvene into open session. So, uh, I'm gonna move, we adjourn, uh, out of the regular session, go into executive session. And then we, as I said, we will not be coming back into open session.
Richie, before you do that, would you agree that we need to go into executive session in order to protect our bargaining and negotiating position?
Yes, absolutely, I was, I was about to, yeah.
Perfect, perfect.
Dan, you made great notes for me, yeah.
I do what I can. Bobby Joe does a great job, too.
No, no, Bobby Joe, you are, you're, you're, you're great, Dan. That's good with all this stuff. Okay, yeah, that's, um, is there any other, before we go into an executive session, is there any other comments or any, anything else before I move into, uh, executive session? If not, okay, I'll understand the motion or a move that we go into executive session pursuant to national laws 38, 21A and six to discuss the lease and valuation of real property, which is Kelly Greens Golf Course, One Willow Road, Nahat. We will not be coming in, back into regular session. Is there a motion?
Uh, I can read the motion, which is a replicate of what you just said. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to go into executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 38, 21A, six, to discuss the lease and valuation of real property, Kelly Greens Golf Course, One Willow Road, Nahat, regarding One Willow Road, Nahat. We will not reconvene into open session.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been seconded. Further discussion. Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote, please give your name and vote.
Josh Hantrum, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Richie Lombard, aye. Okay, we're all set, and now we'll, we'll got the, we've got, Tony's got the new number in there. We're gonna be, alright, hold on, let me just make sure we got it in here.
I'm gonna end this Zoom meeting and open the other one that just you guys have the calling info on.
Okay.
Tony, you gonna send another Zoom link for us?
Yeah, I can, I can resend it to you all right now.
Thank you.
Have I got the right, I, I need a, let me see, Tony.
I'll resend it, I'll resend it to you, Richie.
Yeah, okay, so I can get a cause, I don't have a number here to call back in. Okay, again, thanks very much, everyone on the call, and thanks everyone participating. Debbie, I appreciate you coming in and, uh, and the town council and the board. And we'll go into executive session. Thank you very much.
Thank you.